Ready, Jeremy?
You're on.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'd like to call the Village Board for Tuesday, December 15th to order roll call, please.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Kabaki.
Here.
Trustee Flukie.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I need, I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. I need action on the minutes for the regular meeting of November 24th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Motion to approve the special village board meeting for December 1st, those minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. I need a motion to approve the village board minutes for the special meeting of December 8th, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. Limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on. Number seven, written communications and/or announcements.
I received an update from Kate Green.
That's on the agenda.
That's on the agenda? Okay, nevermind.
That's on the agenda. Yep.
Then we're good.
Okay, I have two. First of all, I would like to announce to everybody that our employee of the year for this year is our deputy clerk, Beth Stein. She did an amazing job with four elections and a lot of legal work that she had to do. So there were many, many weekends that she was here working late. So she is our employee of the year. And then also, I have to read a letter that is addressed to the citizens of the village of Ashwabanan and President Mary Kardowski. Dear fellow citizens and President Kardowski, with mixed emotions and heavy heart, I hereby tender my resignation as Ashwabanan Village Clerk Treasurer effective Monday, January 4th, 2021 at 12:01 a.m. I had never imagined leaving the clerk treasurer position under any circumstances, but I leave knowing that I shall remain vigilant serving Ashwabanan and all of Brown County in my new role as the new duly-elected Brown County clerk. I leave the office of the clerk treasurer in capable hands with committed people who serve with great distinction. They are second to none. I shall miss each of them both personally and professionally. In closing, allow me to convey that it has been an honor and a privilege to serve the village these past six-plus years. To quote President-elect Abraham Lincoln when departing Springfield, Illinois for Washington, D.C., "To assume the mantle of the presidency, my friends, no one, not in my situation, can appreciate my feeling of sadness at this parting. To this place and the kindness of these people, I owe everything. Your obedient servant, Patrick Moynihan, Jr., Clerk Treasurer." So Pat has resigned.
Not yet.
Well, as of January 4th. So, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
I tried.
So this is his last meeting, right? Yes.
This is the last, unless we have another extra special meeting.
Oh, please do.
Five in a row, huh?
Maybe about five or six, I would think.
There you go.
Money's worth.
There you go.
Right. So Patrick has done an excellent job. He's served the community with the honor and distinction, and he's about as steady as you can get. I've watched him work at the county level and did a great job there commanding the board meetings there and that type of thing. So kudos to you and. Thank you. I'm sure you're going to be very successful, and thanks for all you've done for Ashwabanan. Thank you. I won't be far away.
Okay, moving on. Number eight, the 2020 Community Excellence Award. So I have Michelle and Holly from Fortify Bank here. And I'm going to present them, and Patrick will read their proclamation.
Proclamation honoring Fortify Bank 2020 Community Excellence Award. Whereas the Village Board of Trustees of the village of Ashwabanan wishes to annually honor an organization or person who makes extraordinary efforts to improve our community. And whereas Fortify Bank was originally formed in 1876 as first national bank and previously maintained a bank branch on Oneida Street before constructing a new branch building on Cormier Road in 2019 to serve the citizens and businesses of Ashwabanan and northeast Wisconsin. And whereas Fortify Bank has been involved in continuing the betterment of Ashwabanan since joining our community by offering actions such as financial sponsorships of Ashwabanan Parks Recreation and Forestry Department food truck rallies. And whereas during these food rallies, Fortify Bank personnel personally volunteered their respective time to assist the village on seven occasions between 2019 and 2020, thus ensuring these special events were accomplished with great enthusiasm and community mightiness. And whereas Fortify Bank is committed, is a committed community partner that has demonstrated its capacity and willingness to support the village of Ashwabanan both through the acts of their employees and investment in the community. And now therefore, be it resolved with the deepest of appreciation of these efforts and community outreach, the Village Board of Trustees of the village of Ashwabanan does hereby recognize and award Fortify Bank the 2020 Community Excellence Award.
Thank you to the bank. Things like that wouldn't be possible without sponsorship, so great community partner. Okay, number nine, action on consent agenda. Action on operator's license.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the operator license. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 10, action items. 10A, appointment of village clerk. So back in the spring, we had a referendum. We've always had an elected clerk in the village of Ashwabanan. And we did a referendum, and the citizens voted to allow us to have an appointed clerk. So we went through the application process, the interview process, and the village board has selected Chris Teskey as our village clerk. And I will let Tony and Joel add any comments if they'd like, but I'm going to need, after their comments, a motion to appoint Chris Teskey as our village clerk.
I can go ahead. As most of the board is aware, we went through a rather lengthy process to seek applicants, solicit applications for this position. I think we had over a couple hundred applicants for this particular position, of which we then interviewed a select few of those qualified candidates, and then most recently whittled that down and had an interview with the board for the two finalists. We feel that Chris, obviously with her experience working with the city of Green Bay, certainly a much larger organization, and certainly a complex operation there, would certainly fit in very well here in Ashwabanan and continue to take what Patrick has done in the clerk's office and continue to move that forward. So Chris is our recommendation for appointment for this position.
Does anybody want to make that?
All right, if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the appointment of Chris Teskey as village clerk.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second to appoint Chris Teskey as our village clerk? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10B, action on appeal of denied operator's license for Brandon Eland. Patrick.
Within your packets, there's a communication from Brandon Eland, who is appealing his denied operator's license application. Mr. Eland is in attendance. Should you have any questions for him this evening? And I believe you brought a guest with you. If, we could always suspend the rules if she wants to speak as well. But Mr. Eland, if you want to come forward, and the board will entertain any questions of you.
Okay. Did you want to speak first?
Brandon, pull the mic up to your phone, or your mouth.
State your name and address, please, for the record also.
Brandon Eland, 1099 Thorne Do Street. When I was originally applying for my license, I wasn't sure that I had to put down my ticket on there because it happened before I was 18, and I didn't know that I didn't have to put that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Brandon?
Have you applied, Brandon, anywhere for a job that requires the license?
Yes, I currently work at Grand Central Station.
At where?
Grand Central Station.
Which one?
Shell, over by Stadium, the one that just opened up.
Okay.
Okay.
This game in front of the Public Works and Protection Committee. We deny the applicant because of the severity of the conviction and being as close as the time that it has taken places of 2/8/2020. We had a description of a couple other things that the chief gave us. So I am still going to hold to denying the application. There's no other questions. I'll move to deny the application.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the operator's license. Is there any more discussion on this?
Yeah, Gary mentioned chief. Chief, is there anything you'd like to add?
The reason for my denial was he omitted the information on the first application. He professed to admitting that because he didn't, he didn't put it on there because he wanted to better himself. The other reason for my denial was that in reading the reports, he also was not truthful with officers at the scene during the citation. And I also wanted to deny it based on the fact that it was based on our guidelines. This fell within one year of application, and it was a drug conviction. So basically, we had the not putting information on the application, which is an automatic denial. We had the misinformation or untruthfulness with officers on the scene, and then the proximity to the application was the reason for my denial.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the operator's license. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Brandon. Okay, 10C, action on Class B beer license, Class B liquor license to Boomerang Management, Inc., DBA Epic Event Center.
As noted in your packets, Boomerang Management, Inc., doing business as Epic Event Center is nearing completion of refurbishing the former Gordmans Department Store at 2351 Holmgren. As such, the entertainment venue seeks approval of a Class B beer, Class B liquor license to offer its patrons. This did pass Public Works unanimously.
Okay, any discussion? Questions? This is for the new concert venue that used to be the Gordmans.
If there's no questions, move to approve the Class B liquor, Class C, Class B liquor license for Boomerang Management, Inc., doing business as Epic Event Center.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the Class B beer license, Class B liquor license for Boomerang Management, DBA Epic Event Center. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10D, action on requested site plan review for extendable screening system at 831 Armed Forces Drive, parcel VA-41. Aaron.
The requested site plan review is for an extendable screening system similar to one that was recently approved and installed on Hinkle Field. This would be located on Nitski Field, also on Armed Forces Drive. The poles on Hinkle Field are approximately 30 feet, or 33 feet. These would be 23 feet, a little bit lower. Again, intended to keep unscrupulous teams from spying on the Packers' practices. In terms of Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission, both recommended approval with the condition that the screening be lowered, be raised only when there are closed practices. Otherwise, the screening is to remain lowered. Aaron Popke is available online if you have questions for him. Otherwise, be happy to answer any questions for you as well.
Anybody have any questions? Just passed Site Plan and Plan Board.
As Aaron said, Aaron and Mary said they both passed Site Plan and Public Works. They are identical to the ones that are on the practice field on Oneida Street. We didn't see any problem with the comeback that they brought us the last time with the visibility of the poles and the screening. The screening was up the other day, I was told by a few people. I did not see it. I did not hear any bad comments about it. So seeing it's a duplication of what we already are experiencing, if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve as written.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve it. Aaron, did you want to make any comments?
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, everyone. Sorry I didn't have a chance to be with you in person tonight, but I would just say thank you for the consideration. And we will indeed have these down when they're not in use and folded up tightly to be as compact as possible.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I got to, Aaron. If the New England Patriots are the only team in the NFL that cheats, why don't we just do something temporary on the years that they play here? Just kidding.
That is not going in the minutes.
I'll, thank you.
And I'm not a Patriot fan either. I'm a Packer fan.
I appreciate the moment of levity.
Sure, they have a losing.
Your words, not mine.
They have a losing season, right?
As we often say, you can never be too careful. I mean, I won't speak to that specifically, but as we know, we just, it's an abundance of caution and confidentiality.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Aaron. Okay, 10B, update on the PAC. We have, so it's nice to get good news. And there was a question brought up at our budget meeting about what is being done at the PAC. And we found out the other day that Kate received a $36,000 grant to help, to help fund the PAC, which is awesome. And then she also sent a four-page list of the things that they've been doing at the PAC that I will send out to everybody. And I know that Allison Williams would like to talk about this too because she's the representative for the village board on the PAC Advisory Board. So I'll let you take over.
Yeah, I mean, not much to really add, but it's been very difficult to find funding or grants or anything because it's a non-independent, she said, it's excluded from most funding options due to its non-independent nature and affiliation with both a school district and a governmental entity. So that is making it very difficult. We get excluded a lot of the times for grants. But through the state of Wisconsin, what is it called? COVID-19 Live Music and Entertainment Grant Program. That's where we were able to lock in a grant of about $36,000. And that is to help with PPE expenses, lost revenues, really kind of anything, and anything helps at this point. There is a potential, 2021, there will hopefully be some action back at the PAC. Obviously, limited depending on, obviously seating, as well as people coming and things like that. But we are hopeful that in the coming months, we should hopefully get something going back on over at the PAC. So fingers crossed we don't hit a major snag or increase in COVID numbers, but that grant will be a significant help as well as hopefully getting back into some performances in 2021. So.
Allison, do you, or being involved in it, do you try and get entertainment there, and the entertainment does not want to come because of the COVID?
So there's, yes, we are obviously trying. I should also add that I was appointed to this board right before COVID hit, so I have actually not been able to really go to a meeting because basically everything shut down, and there was really nothing to do at that point. But there are a lot of performers pushing their dates and choosing not to travel, as well as if figuring out the plans for how many can we have? What if people don't show day of? What if people want to buy day of? All those potential scenarios of you don't want to oversell a venue because we can only fit 25% capacity or whatever it may be. So there's a host of issues. And I mean, sometimes even if we did have someone, if the state locks down or there's other things, you know, that, there's a lot of roadblocks, I would say, that come up in all different areas.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Allison, isn't it also, if you get only bringing in 25%, a lot of the groups, you're not going to make any money. You're going to lose money on them.
Correct, you're going to lose. Yeah. Unless we can get a sponsor, and then, you know, there's, and sometimes we can get a sponsor, but then there's a whole, whole host of things to take into consideration when scheduling. So. And it's one thing maybe if it's a venue the size of the Rush Center, but I mean, we haven't seen the Rush Center really do anything. We haven't seen really events anywhere, you know. So if the bigger events aren't doing it and haven't figured it out, you know, we're, we're trying to also figure out what's best for us.
Yeah, Broadway is still shut down, so.
Yeah.
Allison, do you know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, go ahead.
I was just wondering how long the grant goes for? Does it have to be expended in a certain amount of time?
It does not say. It doesn't say. It just says due to lost revenues, PPE, all of those types of expenses. We might not have had a ton of PPE because we haven't really been open, but for future and things like that. So I think it's just really to cover, I don't know what fiscal year it has to be applied to, 2020 or 2021.
Was there a question a couple meetings ago, a couple months ago? And without knowing it right now, I'm not going to name names, but somebody on the staff at the PAC got a pretty nice raise. Am I remembering that right or not? Wasn't that the question that kind of triggered this whole, this agenda item off?
I think the, I had raised the question that relates to other park and rec venues cutting back on employee hours and that type of thing during the COVID situation. And I was concerned that the PAC did not do that, from what I could tell. And I've got some more questions, but I'm not going to ask them tonight. That's for another venue.
Okay. Yeah, no, it wasn't that. It was, okay, I, that's why I didn't want to name any names because
Yeah, I mean.
I thought that's what kind of kicked off this agenda item.
And something too, I mean, well, this agenda item was added because we just found out that they got it. They just, they just literally got this grant. So that's why it's just more of an announcement to say they were able to finally lock in. You know, we have different funding. Greg would know that we're available to get through different governmental laws that people have put out there for COVID. But the PAC, because it falls into a school district as well as a governmental entity, gets excluded from grants. So she finally found one that was able to apply to the PAC. And so that's why we're just now getting funding during pandemic because of the interesting scenario that particularly the Ashwabanan PAC is in.
Okay.
It'd be one thing if it was like the Appleton Performing Arts Center. I'm not quite sure, but they're not, I don't think they're school board-owned or, you know, village-owned or anything like that. So their relief type of funding is in a different area than what our funding would be in.
So is this, is this grant part of the COVID-19 relief?
Yes.
Package? Okay, so at some point, it turns into a loan?
Um.
If, if, if they're not relieved of it, you know, applying to get relief from it?
I don't.
If it's the same as the other small businesses?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not sure. I just know it's called the Live Music and Entertainment Grant Program.
Okay.
So.
Something, we're going to want to find out.
Yeah, but I don't think it's part of state funding.
Okay.
It's a grant program specific, but I don't think it's like CARES Act or, I mean, we can find out the specifics, but I don't think it's like the PPE loans or what those things are called where it's truly the loan. I don't know if it falls into that bucket.
Okay.
So.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on. 10F, action regarding the assignment of the Capital Credit Union Stadium lease documents from Big Top Ashwabanan LLC/Green Bay Baseball LLC to Boomerang Stadium Holdings LLC/Boomerang Baseball LLC. So I'm sure everybody saw this in the paper that Big Top has sold the Green Bay Booyah to Boomerang Baseball. And it's exciting. That's a very exciting thing for the village. So I will let Aaron. Tony?
And just to follow up, this agenda item is a series of assignment documents as part of the original lease between the village and Big Top Baseball concerning the operation of Capital Credit Union Park. There was a master lease as well as a sublease with the Northwoods League with respect to the baseball team. These documents on the agenda tonight are an assignment of that lease to Boomerang Baseball and the new owners of the Green Bay Booyah. As part of their transaction, they need to obtain the village's consent under the terms of our lease to assign that, and that's what this agenda item is for. So with that, any other particulars, I would defer to Big Top or Boomerang's representatives that may be, that are here tonight and may wish to comment.
Anybody have questions?
Are there any changes in the assignment from the previous documents with the previous entity that we had the agreement with?
No, it's simply assigning the original lease and the subsequent amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Would anybody like to hear from Big Top?
I would be very interested to know if anything is changing going forward with the team and everything. So. So yeah, why don't you guys come forward?
Well, hello, I'm.
Well, hello, I'm Vern Stenman with Big Top, and I can just kind of talk about the past, and I do thank you for the opportunity to come up quickly and, and on behalf of my business partner, Connor Coloya, and our Vice President, John Fonta, who will be staying on to operate the team and has been with, with us here in Ashwabhanan since we started on day one, and will continue to be here for a long time. I think, I just want to say thank you. I think it's just a little bit over three years ago that we started the discussion with the Village and Mary and Erin and their staff and the entire board to pursue this idea that we'd been working on for a long time, you know, in, in Green Bay. And really quickly, you shared our vision. We built upon it, I think, and created a pretty amazing asset, hopefully, for this community for a long time to come. It was not our original intent to get to this point of selling the franchise this early on in our operation of it. Long story short, family really drove the, the pursuit of the possibility of doing it at this point. And, and really equally, the right person coming in. We have so much respect for the Village and the opportunities you've given us as a business that we were not going to put this in the hands of someone that wasn't going to just, wasn't going to not only sustain what we had already built, but we wanted to turn it over to someone that we really honestly felt could make it better and then continue to invest in, in the facility and in the community and make baseball and the associated events that are outside of baseball an even bigger and more important part of this community for years to come. And when we found out that Mark was interested, Mark Scogan and Boomerang and his group in acquiring the team, we literally couldn't imagine a better fit, a better buyer. He played college baseball. He understands the community part of things. He lives here. This is home. And I think that the Village, the team, the stadium, all of our partners, our employees, this is about as positive of an outcome as we can imagine, and we, we feel great to be able to bring it to you here tonight. And again, thank you for your consideration. I have Brian Stenzel here with me from, from Boomerang and representing Mark Scogan here tonight, and he can answer better your questions about the, about the future. But from our perspective, we think it's, we think it's very bright.
Thank you, Vern. Yes, my name is Brian Stenzel, Vice President of Boomerang Management, representing Mark Scogan and the ownership moving forward. And to answer your question, our plan coming into it is we plan to keep all the staff that's on board. We've met with them all, very excited about this group of people. They're an outstanding group. We kind of laid out some of our, our thoughts of continuing with the, the excellence that's been put on at the stadium to this point and some of our ideas moving forward. And we are definitely on the same page with the staff. We want to bring a lot of good quality entertainment, not only just Booyah Baseball, but other outside events, rentals, et cetera, and keep the stadium as busy as possible.
Excellent. Thank you.
I have a question on the synergy. I saw that there's some of the same people on Epic Event Center that are there. Are some of the same staff going to work the baseball field as well as the Epic Center? And is there any synergy between the two as far as events or activities?
Sure, good question. I will be overseeing both properties, but other than that, it'll be pretty separate entities. The Booyah staff will be in charge of the events and stuff at Booyah Stadium. There is an Epic Event Center General Manager and Entertainment Manager there. There may be some sharing of staff at times, the part-time staff concessions, bartending kind of thing. And there may be some cross-promotion of concerts. You know, we may have the Booyah Stadium rent out the facility for a concert that Epic would produce. But in essence, they're two separate organizations with me and Mark Scogan really being the only ones overseeing both of them.
Thank you.
Vern, when you came to us and proposed a team here in Ashwabhanan, how many teams did you have at that time?
We had four, four Northwoods League teams.
Right, so by selling this one off, how many teams are you going to have left?
So we sold our, our team in Wisconsin Rapids about a year ago, a little bit less than a year ago. And so after this transfer is complete, we'll have the team in Kenosha, the Kingfish, and the team in Madison, the Mallards.
The Mallards, okay, okay. You intend on keeping them?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's all I had. I knew you had more than a couple teams, so.
And for the record, too, we'll continue to operate the soccer team, the Green Bay Voyagers, that will be calling, you know, Capital Credit Union Park home. And so we will still have a, an operation happening here in Ashwabhanan as we, as we go forward with the soccer side.
You're keeping the soccer for yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, very good. Do we need a motion here, I guess?
Yep, yes, we do.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to, where do I go here? All right, I'll make a motion to the stadium lease documents from the Big Top Ashwabhanan LLC, Green Bay Baseball LLC, to Boomerang Stadium Holding LLC/Boomerang Baseball LLC.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to do the assignment of the Capital Credit Union Stadium lease. Everybody understands? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 10G, action regarding the First Amendment to Tax Incremental Financing Developers' Performance Agreement between the Village of Ashwabhanan and Redu Homes, Inc. for Alden Station. Okay, Erin?
The requested amendment to the development agreement really is meant to realign the project along with the, the current timeline that we're working with. The actual construction was delayed a little bit due to some additional contamination on the site, as well as some delays we dealt with FEMA. When COVID hit, they put a halt to their review process that we initially planned on concluding in June. It got pushed back until the end of October. So as a result of that construction, everything else got delayed a little bit. So the amendment is meant, like I said, to kind of recalibrate the timeline along with the realities on the ground. And it also incorporates the language the Village Board looked at a couple months ago, maybe a month ago, I forgot the number of meetings we've had regarding the pedestrian bridge and the coordination and cooperation with Redu Homes on the eventuality of getting a dock location on that property as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. And also Ryan Redu is in the audience. If you have any questions for him.
Erin, what is the irrigation system they're referring to? Is that for lawn watering or for the pond, or what is that exactly?
That'd be for the lawns. There's efficiency certainly with trying to put an irrigation system in at the beginning of the process. If you're a riparian owner, you do have the ability under state law to utilize Fox River water for irrigation systems. So we're working through that process along with the, the dock at the same time. We just have to make sure that, that those two processes don't in any way interfere with the potential, you know, discussion we're having right now regarding the pedestrian bridge across Ashwabhanan Creek.
Anybody have questions?
So this development agreement extends the development timeframes. Does it have any increased liability for the Village?
No, it does not. Increases it for one year. Basically what it does, it, I guess what, what we're seeing based upon conversations with, with Ryan and his staff is that the sales are actually are doing very well. So I would say the timeline in the development agreement is worst-case scenario in that they're held to those timelines. I think things are progressing much better than what are in the timeline right now.
So it benefits them to accelerate it just as it helps us out, too, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir. So how many of them are sold currently?
I'll defer to, to Ryan on that.
Beautiful.
Just state your name and address for the record, please, Ryan. Thank you.
Ryan Redu, Redu Homes, 2585 South Broadway. So maybe I'll come back to your questions shortly. I mean, basically, things have been going great there. Appreciate working with the staff and the, the board on the project. And yes, the sales have kind of taken off as fast, as fast as we could imagine. And we've actually not done a lot of marketing on purpose because we can't keep up with the construction end of it. So I think I have
Good problem.
10 of the first 12 units sold. So we got units that we haven't purchased the land yet and kind of in the hopper already. As soon as I can get framers and contractors on there, we're, we're really moving along really well. So.
Right.
My dad took a drive down there the other day, Ryan. He worked at Schneider for 35 years, and he said it looks a little different than when he used to.
Yeah, it's, it's really coming together really well. The only struggle we're having right now is we have no power and gas. So if you drive past around the weekend, I got a generator that's been running 24/7 for three and a half weeks now. But so hopefully we're on the home stretch on that part of it. But so if I could, just, the only thing I was going to talk to the board about just was that I'd like to, you know, please try to continue to work on that, the irrigation system and the dock part of it and along with the, the bridge. Obviously, we're happy to get the project realigned, and we know that you guys are under constraints and we don't want to mess with that schedule. But I would just ask at some point if things stretch out that I might want to come back and just see if we can move that process along because we do have people that are looking for that dock as an amenity. And at the beginning of this whole project, we, we talked about whether that the trail would be an easement on land that we would purchase or the Village would purchase. And I guess through the, through the, you know, process, again, I was fully aware of how we, how we did it, didn't think it was an issue. And now this is kind of an unforeseen circumstance on our end, too. So again, happy with everything that's going along. Just ask that in the future, you know, we continue to try to work together. So, but excellent project. We're very happy with it, so.
Yeah, just, just for any of the board members, in case you don't know, we have put in for grants for the bridge, and we have to be the owner of the outlot when we're putting in for the grants. So that's, that's what we have to work through first, so.
What you're really saying, Mary, is we got to work through the bridge and get that approved before we can approve a dock.
Correct.
Which, which they are looking to do.
Correct.
Is that going to hold up their irrigation?
I will let Erin answer that.
So both the, the dock and the irrigation are subject to what are called riparian rights. So basically, to have a dock and/or an irrigation system, you have to have land up against the water body. So at this point, the Village is a riparian owner because we have Outlot Five that snakes along the entire frontage of the river. So we are trying to figure out some ways to incorporate the homeowners association as a riparian owner with the Village. But again, we need to make sure that whatever we do in that aspect doesn't create any issues for us in terms of the grant applications for the bridge.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Tax Incremental Financing Developers' Performance Agreement between the Village of Ashwabhanan and Redu Homes, Incorporated for Alden Station as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve.
Who seconded?
Tracy.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the TIP Developers' Performance Agreement with the Village and Redu Homes for Alden Station. Everybody understands? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Keep, keep going on those homes.
We're fine, we're fine.
Okay. 10H, consider, discuss, and act on Resolution Number 12-1-20 Vacation Carry Forward Policy Exception. We have an issue with the whole wonderful COVID again and some vacation time. So I will let Joel explain all of that.
Yeah, the Resolution 120120 is more of just a formal process approving an exception to the Village's current personnel manual. Within the personnel manual, we do not have the ability to carry forward more than 40 hours or one week of paid vacation time for general employees. There are exceptions within the personnel policies for public safety, but for general Village employees, we do not have that, that ability. So this resolution, more or less, will provide an exception to that rule, albeit a temporary exception just given the nature of the, the COVID-19 pandemic. The reason why this resolution or request is being brought forward to is that we have a handful of employees that may have more than 40 hours of vacation that has been accrued over the year and that they have been unable to take that time off primarily related to job duties and requirements associated from COVID-19 and some of the limitations that, that it's created. A few examples of that could be our clerk office, who has been diligently involved in four very busy elections, and then couple of the, the sequence of events and the time that they would have to be present to handle absentee balloting and Election Day responsibilities, as well as the statutory mandates after election of recording and reporting results. They would have a period of weeks, four times a year, where they would not be available to take vacation. Couple that with any quarantine requirements and things like that, if they've had contact exposures, they may have been out of work for 14 days, albeit not on vacation for that. And so the, the work piles up and they're unable to take that time off. And so administration felt it was appropriate to provide this one-time exception primarily related to that COVID requirement. So there's a few conditions as a part of the resolution, as you'll see. Again, this will allow up to two regular weeks. Right now, our policy currently only allows one. In order for an employee to receive that accumulated carryover, they need to request that in writing to the department head by January 4th. And that just kind of creates a timeline sequence for them to get the request to them. Department heads will have discretion as to whether they want to recommend that request to the Village Manager and Village President. And it should be noted that the intent here is that if an employee was unable to take time off because of COVID or some type of condition resulting in COVID, that those would be the, the situations where a department head would likely recommend that carryover. If it was just simply because an individual had to cancel their cruise because they didn't want to be stuck on a cruise ship out in the middle of sea, and that was the reason why they canceled their vacation, that may not be a reason why it would get recommended for approval. Those items will come to my office, of which then I will compile those requests, and then ultimately, the Village President will have discretion as to whether to approve those requests. Again, a singular exception, it's just for the calendar year 2020 to be carried forward into 2021. In the event that that employee is unable to use that vacation time, unless directive by the board, that vacation time in 2021 would expire. So at the end of 2021, if they don't use that additional week, unless further action is taken by the board, they would again lose that week. No significant financial detriment to this carryover because there's no payout requirement as part of that, albeit there is a loss of productivity because there's another possibly 40 hours that that employee could be off of work on paid leave in the next calendar year. So with that, I'd be able to, be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Joel, just to simplify it, they can carry over 2020 into 2021. It has to be used up by the end of 2021.
Correct.
Okay. And they carry over whatever they accrued the whole time of 2020, or do they lose anything?
They could potentially lose more. They, by, by policy, they can currently carry over 40. Through this resolution, they could carry over an additional 40, so a cumulative total of 80 hours. Say the employee has 120 hours of vacation time accrued yet, they would lose 40 hours of that vacation time because they would not be able to carry over their full balance, only the 80 hours.
Joel, what's the exposure? How many, what are we, how many people are we talking?
I did ask Greg to kind of try to run a report. It was a little difficult to get that report. We anticipate, based on looking at the individual records, there could be a, a half a dozen to a dozen employees that may request that. We do know over the next two weeks, we have a series of employees that have significant time off, and so there could be 40 or 80 hours that they're going to be, be cutting from that. So I think the exposure is pretty limited. And beyond that, it certainly is going to be the discretion of the department head and ultimately the president to make that approval happen.
Okay, thank you.
Joel, I can jump in here also. Public Works, we had brought this up as a discussion topic a couple months ago because we were, we were seeing a concern. because we were seeing a concern. We had to call some guys in that were on vacation, calling them back in because we had a couple of exposures out there. But with the lack of snow so far this year, the month of December, we've been able to let guys, more guys off on vacation. So we've been able to whittle away at those numbers. Just going through, and Greg's correct in that in our current, in our vacation system, it doesn't show what's being taken through the end of the year. But through the end of the last pay period here, we had one person in the neighborhood of 60 hours. So you're talking half of that 40-hour extension. In the utilities, there's nobody over the 40-hour limit. So we've seen it where it's dramatically declined here over the last couple of weeks, which has been a good thing, and it's been because of the weather. So if we can keep that for another couple of weeks, we should be in good shape on Public Works Utilities and the things.
Weather, and probably more people took off for deer hunting maybe than in the past.
By the look of the sad faces and not much venison showing up around Village Hall, I'm not sure.
Okay.
You did a good job this year controlling the weather, Doug.
I can say in my HR world and all of the emails that I get to kind of stay up to date on everything, this is a very common issue in a lot of companies. I know even my company is facing it, and we discussed it today, actually, so, and what we're going to do. So I know this is a practice a lot of companies are making exceptions to. So I am in support of it. If there's no further discussion, I'll make a
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 12-01-20 Vacation Carry Forward Policy Exception.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 12-01-20. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Okay, 10I, possible discussion and action on license and permit application language to background checks.
All right, this item is a follow-up to a previous discussion at Public Works and Protection regarding the language contained on our permit applications for licenses and permits concerning background checks. There was a discussion, as you may recall, on generalized guidelines on how the chief would evaluate applications and consider applicants' background checks. What this proposed language that is set forth in the green sheet, so to speak, sets forth some language to be changed on the application to make it more clear for the applicants to understand what they need to basically disclose or list as part of the application process for their license or permit. The sheet lists out the current language as well as the new proposed language, which talks about arrest conviction records for any felony misdemeanor operating under the influence criminal traffic or non-traffic local ordinance violation, and that all offenses must be listed, and all charges that were part of a plea agreement still must be listed on the application. Also contains a link to the CCAP, Wisconsin Circuit Court Access Program website, so that applicants can look up for detailed information and list as part of their application. So this is just some proposed language to clean up as a result of previous discussion on guidelines pertaining to background checks.
And I can touch on it. I was the one that kind of, I want to say, came up with this language. But I know the office does a really good job at telling applicants what they're supposed to do, what they're supposed to fill out. But we all know people don't always listen the greatest or read the greatest. And I know if something is missed minor, you know, we go back to them and say, hey, you know, can you add this? But I'm hoping that if we clarify this and really put it out there, and if they, after seeing this, and we even tell them where you can go to to look at your record, you know, there's hopefully going to be a lot less back and forth, hopefully, for the clerk's office as well as the chief. And it's going to make denying an operator license, I think, on our behalf, a little easier as well. Because I didn't know I was supposed to list it. That's not an option anymore. Failure to do so, failure to list something, it's right in front of you. If you can't read the directions to fill this out, I don't know if I want you selling alcohol in Ashwabanan. So that's kind of the reasoning behind this language, kind of calling it right out, list everything, and that's the expectation. So that was kind of the reasoning behind the language. But obviously, open to discussion if anyone has anything.
It seems to be well-done and to the point. And like you said, it gives you everything you need to do to fill out the form. If you read it and you take counsel from our staff, so I think it's well-done.
I agree. We had a big discussion on that at Public Works. Chief, you've got anything to add to it? You're the one that looks at those apps right away. I think it's just a matter of people not reading it or understanding it maybe. But do you have anything to say on it, Chief?
I think that you guys covered it pretty well. The main point is the clarity on what they're supposed to put down and the fact that we've given them information of where they can find it. So they can't use that excuse, and it does give you a better guideline to say that maybe people didn't understand it. It's spelled out pretty clearly. It covers all the information that I need to make a determination. So hopefully, it will reduce some of the back and forth, as Allison said.
All right, if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the proposed license and permit application background check language.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the license and permit application language for the background checks. Any more discussion?
I just have one question. The statement where it says non-traffic local ordinance violation, is the term "local" referring to just local, like here? Or is it saying any municipality that has a local ordinance, and you have violation, whether it's in Green Bay, Ashwabanan, DePere, would be what you're talking about?
Yeah, that refers to municipal citations.
So anywhere?
Not a state citation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Number 11, items for next agenda. If you have anything, give the office a call. Patrick, you're on.
During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabanan may convene in a closed session pursuant to A, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851(c) for considering the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee, including a Village of Ashwabanan employee's request for leave of absence over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility; B, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851(f) for the purpose of possible discussion and action on considering a Village of Ashwabanan employee's request for leave of absence in financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where per ends B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations; C, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851(g) for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy with respect to Keene-Achlin LLC litigation in which it is or likely to become involved. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.852 to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
I'll accept the motion to convene into closed session, Madam President.
Motion to
Move to go into closed session.
Motion and a second to go into closed session.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul. Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Krieger.
Yes.
Trustee Kabakki.
Aye.
Trustee Flukie.
Aye.
President Kardowski.
Yes.
We are in closed session.